Well, I will call the meeting of the select board here in Manchester for August nineteenth to order. We will start with a roll call vote for the select board members. Jeff?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Here.
Anne, somewhere out in the Atlantic.
But I can see you.
Never that far away. And John is here. Okay, so we're all here and I thank you all for attending our meeting this evening. First thing on the agenda, I won't say the formal agenda, but first thing, a public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone that has a comment? And I look to Greg or anyone online. Okay. Chairman's report, we will defer that to the next meeting. And let's go to the select board action items, which we update with each of our meetings. Is there anything that any of the select board members would like to add? Or modify on the action items that we have, and we have three that we will be covering today, but for future action items. What do you think? Okay, the only thing that I would ask, but maybe you're going to cover that tonight, Greg, is we had mentioned a consultant for operational audits.
I didn't give it up till now.
Okay, all right, fine. All right, then that's going to be covered this evening. That's good. All right, great. Then we'll move on to the formal agenda, and the first event is a celebratory one, and I might say the second one in as many consecutive meetings as we've had involving our public safety staff. And I would ask Chief McNeely to provide us with the details.
Sure. Tonight I have the same pleasure of introducing Matt Seeley to the select board and to the town. Matt comes to us as our newest full-time firefighter. He actually started towards the end of June, and he's been a valuable asset in our department already. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, this is the first meeting that we could get him into. But nonetheless, he's already off to a good start and a valued member of our team. Joining him is his wife Katie, his son Connor, and his daughter Maya, and his in-laws as well. So Matt comes to us from Acton Fire. He comes as a fully credentialed paramedic and firefighter. So he spent a couple of weeks on days and he was kind of plug and play. So it worked out very well. So without further ado, we'd like to do our ceremony of pinning the badge on firefighter Seeley. Who's got the honors? Everyone doing it? Come on up.
Don't worry, there's plenty of EMTs in paramedic. Try and not six, just draw a little blood, draw some blood. I don't want to see blood.
It's not official unless you see red.
So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I always enjoy those events as literally a show of force. Great. Okay, so we're right on time, pretty close on time. And the next, the next subject on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. Again, I guess the Housing Authority, could you clarify that? Greg, is it both groups?
Oh, well, I'll leave it up to.
So the Affordable Housing Trust and Affordable, Manchester Housing Authority have a joint meeting scheduled for seven. We are here as an update to the Board of Selectmen, the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
We have given you an update in the Y.
Sometime in two thousand twenty-three, I see from my notes. Okay, I think it was, well, great, so.
So this is John Corryback, and he is the chairman and the housing extraordinaire, Ian Chris. So John's going to give the presentation.
Hello, everyone. Chairperson of the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust, but also on behalf of our partner, the Housing Authority. And as Martin mentioned, we haven't been here probably in close to a year, and we just wanted to update the select board because I think we're at a critical point. And I'm referring to the development plan that you're aware of. It's focusing on Newport Park, the Plains loading place in the context of new, new units on the sites and possibly rehabilitation. That's a plan that we have been engaged with, boards such as yourself, FinCom, planning, going back to probably twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Probably maybe not that late, that late. In two thousand twenty-one, we had a culmination of that. We had a presentation at the town meeting where there was a non-binding approval of the plan, the concept, in addition to having some flexibility on price for the land, whatever land we charge, to reduce development costs to promote affordable, community affordable housing. We issued a request for proposal, I think it was in two thousand twenty-two, and unfortunately, there was no response. We reconvened, spoke to some development partners who gave us some advice, and the advice was issue a request for qualifications, and that would attract a qualified developer to provide guidance to us. We didn't issue it to actually select a developer to proceed with the plan, but a team could work with us, critique the request for proposal, look at our development concepts, see which way it could be improved, so that when we do move forward with the request for proposal, which we plan to do, it's something that seemed more feasible and reasonable. When we had one response, it was a very credible, strong development team based in Boston, Preservation Affordable Housing. In my little summary to you, I give a little outline of their background, they're a very, very strong team in Boston. They've got some influence in North Shore communities, and they're very, very respected at the state, the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities. Congratulations to Chase. They looked at our proposal and they looked at our concept, and they said, "Great idea, but the issue you have is land availability." I think you've heard us say that we need to have a one-to-one matching in development to have a feasible development from a point of view of just economic viability from a development partner, but also to meet state funding guidelines. So when we were looking at the three sites, at one point, we included Pleasant Street. We were looking at about eighty units. When we issued the request for proposal, we took away Pleasant Street because of the uncertainty of that. And we just put load in place, we put two other sites. No response. POA said, "You guys need more land. Otherwise, you're going to have a, you're just not going to attract a developer." So with that, we explored options on Newport Park at the Plains. And one thing we just wanted to revisit with you, it's this site on Pleasant Street. You recall, when we initially moved on this plan, we included Pleasant Street. It was taken out probably a year, year and a half ago. It may have been after a medium head of two. We're reaching a point now where to really increase the viability or even meet basic feasibility in our plan. Land is a premium, and we see that Pleasant Street site as an important resource to the residential neighborhood. We'd be providing housing in a residential context. So we just wanted to leave that with you as you're deliberating other competing uses that the town would have for that site. One important use would be housing. Our concept has been supported by the town, by residents, and to get that and to use that would increase the viability tremendously. So that's the first point we wanted to bring to your attention and leave you with. I hope you'll consider that as you weigh your other options and lean on the housing option. The second is, when you looked at Newport Park on the back right, they said that would be, if you're going into Newport Park and you turn around that last building, there's like a little parking area. There's that last building there that could be reconfigured, it could be repurposed. If we had more land back there, the consultant said that would be an ideal spot to have slightly larger footprint and maybe slightly higher density. There's really no butter issues, it's placed in the back near the powder house. So they thought that would be a very strong element if we could do that. In our discussions at our meetings and with Mark, who's brought to our attention, and there's some town discussions with parking and like these easement issues, but we just wanted to bring it to your attention, and that would be a vitally important site for a forthcoming RFP to make it known that that, a developer could have flexibility to look at that back right and propose something that would be appropriately from site context, from design, but also enhance the economic viability. I mean, so unless there's any other point that a trust member wanted to.
Yeah, I want to add one thing, just to remind you, John. The state just passed a huge housing bond bill, billions of dollars, which includes a big chunk of money to rehab public housing units. And the Newport Park, well, actually, all of the Housing Authority properties are state-funded public housing. So they'll all be eligible if we can put a plan together for a major renovation. And again, if we can add other units to those properties, that's going to make the state much more keen to participate in this because obviously, as we all know, there's a critical shortage of affordable housing. And in fact, there's a shortage of housing across the board, which is why the MBTA Communities Act was passed as well. So we can take advantage of the state's current willingness to fund these projects. This is probably, the next year is going to be a critical time to do it.
And just to add to that further, then, we're here for comments. And we've recently found out that Marblehead has got a public housing. We knew it had an inventory, but recently they put out a request for proposal for a plan somewhat similar to ours. You're identifying their current housing stock, you're looking at their available vacant land, and they're trying to get a developer to create new units and then have financing to rehab their current units. Wind companies based in Boston, National Company Development responded and won that bid. So they're on line to be a developer, and they're looking at approximately a hundred units, a combination of new and renovation, and they're going to, they're going with the same state agency that we're considering, Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities. They're going with what we consider a relatively small density. And I've had conversations with the state, and they say, you know, as long as you have something that hits some of the metrics that they're looking for in their evaluation criteria, we could be viable. So we have some, I wouldn't say precedent because it hasn't been funded yet, but wind companies is very, very strong in the state. POA giving us direction is very, very strong in the state, and they're sort of, we're sort of going in the same direction. So, but for our lack of land. So that's really a pressing issue that we wanted to bring to your attention. And as I characterized my little summary to you, I hope that we could get from the select board.
Well, thank you for those comments. Questions from the board? Jeff?
So, without Pleasant Street, how short are you land-wise to put a decent plan together?
We anticipated approximately thirty from our previous, our proof of concept. That thirty added to assumptions on the other sites, brought us up to the mid-eighties. I think we've learned what we were assuming on Newport really wasn't feasible. We were looking in the back left, and there was a plan that I think it would come into problem with the down slope of the woods, and there's some water issues. That's why I think the back right is extremely attractive and important. But we're probably looking, you know, sixty, probably sixty to eighty would be important.
He's asking acres.
Acres?
Yeah.
How much?
It'll be fifteen units an acre, maybe two or three acres.
That's a mid-rise, that would be a mid-rise, fifteen units per acre.
It'd be townhouses or.
Yeah, mid-rise. I think the townhouses would be like eight acres, I understand it.
Yeah, well, you know, like ten, twelve Summer Street, that's eighteen units.
That's something was the law, that's the metric that the state looks at.
Yeah, so because the two locations might have different, it sounds like speed is of an issue, is, you need to move, right? I sense an urgency, you know, whoever gets to the money first gets the money, right? So we get to move. And I believe Pleasant Street would be a longer lead item task to go address that. So my question is, can we split the two, move out on Newport Park? And if yes, what exactly are the next steps?
In my discussions with the Marblehead, the Public Housing Authority contact who ran the process that led to the request for proposal, and a lesson's learned, after she looked at our RFP, she said, "Maybe put them out à la carte." Rather than three sites and the developer might look at one of the sites, "God, I don't know if I want to work on that one, but the other two look viable." One lesson we learned is the forthcoming RFP will list the sites individually.
What I'm getting at is there are things that the town may be able to do faster than move a DPW site, okay? So trying to say that's a longer lead item, and decisions have to be made on whether or not we use Pleasant Street. Newport Park seems smaller, doable, and my question is, what are the next steps? You say land is of an issue. Do we already own the land necessary? Or if not, what do we have to do? I'm not clear on it. Let's say we're all supportive of what you want to do, what are the actions?
So if you're looking at using some of the power to the cell, there needs to be some land swapping. Legislative blessing of that, because it's conservation.
Okay.
So, so there's some hurdles there. They're not insurmountable, but there are hurdles.
Okay, we assumed, or I thought it would be about some town meeting approval before the pursuit at the state level, isn't that right?
Well, typically you would want, yeah, to want the voters to approve that kind of potential swap. What's the, what's the new land that will go into conservation? So you need to, typically the state looks for a three-to-one ratio, so it'll be one acre of conservation land we take. They're looking for three acres new, not hard and fast, but that's a general rule of thumb. So if you're going to take some of Powder House, you need, you still need to find some way to put in conservation.
That parking area, the back right, people pull in, and I get the impression it's access to Powder House, might be someone parking for Newport. Is that Powder House right there, or is it?
No, that's Newport.
That's Newport. Yeah.
The Housing Authority's. So, but if you're, if you go up the hill a little bit, then you're into the Powder House.
Now, the question is, can you squeeze in to achieve your objective quickly? Is there any way to squeeze into the land the Housing Authority or the town already has? That's really my question.
I guess the question is, how much density could we tolerate?
Go up.
Yeah, we could, can we go four stories, five stories there? That might do it.
What is the status?
That would be one way to go about.
You're most likely a friendly forty B.
But we'd want that, I would think. What is status of one's appeals? Is that conservation mode?
It is reserved for recreation and school-related uses.
And it's been used that a lot, hasn't it?
It's deed restricted, though?
It's deed restricted.
Because I haven't seen one of the school kid playing that.
Anne, questions, thoughts?
The reason this came to the front was, somebody asked us, well, there's seventy-six of Summer Street that's just come on the market, which could be converted into a half a dozen or eight units of affordable housing. And I didn't have an answer as to why that wasn't something we should be doing, and I'd like to know why it isn't.
Any, any talk about acquiring private property will be done in an executive session, not in a public meeting.
Right.
I think the short answer is that it's certainly something to talk, think about and talk about. Yes. And there's another part of it too, which is there's some vacant, underutilized land as part of the memorial school right next to it. And I don't know who exactly owns that land and whether.
That's, the town owns and leases the land to the school.
So maybe that whole part of it could be subdivided.
It just, is that something that could feas, could conceivably be done? I'm not talking about, you know, purchasing the land. I just, is that a project that is of a size that's worth doing? Or is it just seven or eight units, it's just too much hassle, and, and we need to work on a bigger project?
Well, I think it's something that the board needs the opportunity to talk about once we became aware that the property was for sale.
Okay, but maybe you should be looking.
Oh, Ian, we knew consistently.
Okay. How about, how about Old Corner Inn?
Once you put your buy land or do something like that, then you need somebody to run it. It's not just, you can't just make affordable housing and say, "Here you go." And that's why we partner with a development person who then becomes the person that runs it. You could put twelve units there, but then what? Who's going to say, "Okay, yeah, you're all right, you can go in"? Who's going to investigate the finances? Who's going to run the place? That's not part of the, of our direction, and we don't have the ability to do it.
It wouldn't be, the town wouldn't be the property.
No, no.
You'd need someone else, a nonprofit.
Right. Well, usually to get a nonprofit involved takes a bigger number than that.
So, ask this question, so the property on Pleasant Street isn't part of the Housing Authority. So if you develop that, what would happen there as far as that goes?
Same thing, we'd partner with a developer, and he would end up to be a partnership, and the developer would end up managing the property.
Developer would be the land.
Like Powder House. Like the properties.
Some street, same thing, they're run by property managers.
To that point, part of the problem are the land acquisition costs and how they amortize that or how many units they can have to build.
Yeah.
All right, so say that parcel that Anne's talking about is a million dollar, a one and a half million dollar parcel to build just eight units, doesn't make it economically feasible. All right, so that's why you're trying to aggregate as much as you can to drive your cost down. And so, I mean, the big key is look at land acquisition costs. And then you look at the site work and everything else like that, the actual cost involved.
Have you, have you, I assume that you folks have talked with some forty B folks with regard to try and, try and put some sort of picture together with them because they have certain advantages that regular developers don't. Have they said anything with regard to all of the concepts that you presented at this point?
Currently, calling forty B developers is a little pejorative. Can we call them nonprofit developers?
Or for-profit, really. Well, it's a mix, yeah, it's a mix. I mean, the focus is on community affordable housing, whoever we're trying to reach out to, and we've had conversations.
I think that part of the issue with the SLB forty B development doesn't exactly make nonprofits from knocking at a door to put in a forty B development.
We have a, our reputation precedes us. Okay.
Oh.
But if it's, speaking personally, if we approach a developer or they come to us and we work with them and engage with them and we reach out, I see that as quite different than what we're starting.
It becomes, it becomes the classic private public partnership.
Yeah, exactly.
And, you know, and I think a good forty P developer, friendly forty P developer, he would take the temperature of the town before he would spend too much money or too much time. He would do look for grassroots development. It's not a bad thing.
It's happened here, actually. Ten to twelve Summer Street is private partnership.
Well, it seems to me like being able to go up a little bit higher at Newport Park so you can get your density up because acquiring three or four acres in that space is a lot. And you've got to swap this out for ten or twelve, and the town's not sitting on a whole lot of property.
But, John, I think one of the concerns that we have is that there was conversation going on about a land swap at that Newport Park site. And we wanted to make sure that if in fact some type of a land swap happens, it doesn't result in the fact that that back right corner is set aside for parking for Powder House Hill, so therefore it wouldn't be able to be developed as affordable housing. So that was one of our concerns.
And I might add that if we go to the state and say, "We're not swapping it three-to-one, we're doing a one-to-one, but you're going to get affordable housing out of this deal."
That's what I'm thinking. They're mandating with the MBTA zoning. Basically, they're telling you have to do it, so this is the only way we can do it, guys.
Yeah.
So I can see that. The cost of, I think, construction cost of going up will be exorbitant and almost doesn't make it, I don't think it makes it economically feasible to construct above existing.
So, so I'd like to suggest we focus on Newport Park, continue to focus on that. It seems like the most logical place to get something done as quickly as possible. I, I think, you know, I'm not sure if it's the Housing Trust or brag the town, but I think we need clarity around how many acres are we missing, right, to Jeff's question? How many acres are we missing? We need that answer. And then, other than getting the land swap, let's say we propose a one-to-one at town meeting, what are the next steps? So I need to know, how many acres are we talking about? What would the proposed land swap be? And then what, what are the next steps?
I think you start with Newport and see where you end up as far as a landslide swap, where they want to be. You know, and then you know if they want three acres to an acre, you know, then you just stop there and do something.
My question though is, that's what we just talked about is action that the select board, I think, can, can help facilitate. But you guys have to go out for an RP. I'm trying to understand the big process here. What are the next steps? I think I've got some ideas what we need to do, but what are, what are your next steps?
We need to put a plan together, then put out the RFP, then go to town meeting.
Okay, so would you be targeting town meeting in the spring?
Yes.
Okay. So then what might be helpful is a backward schedule, right?
Yeah.
And we all have actions and.
And it seems that going up with the existing building might be part of that picture, whether it's a forty B or you're seeking variances with a regular developer. But adding a floor becomes practical to get.
Excuse me, there's a problem with adding a floor, given that there, those are non-elevator buildings. It's, it's starting from the ground and building up. Why aren't we considering Newport? Why aren't we considering the Plains?
We are.
You would be part of it.
Yeah. I mean, when we issue the request for.
I mean, when we issue the request for, for proposal and we'll have the planes, Newport Park and loading, and as we've indicated, I think we're gonna go in a direction of saying you could apply to one or all or two, uh, but we would, we would include that.
But I think that when we worked with POA, they were kind of steering us towards Newport as being the one that would be considered the most feasible by a developer, which is why we're honing in on that.
Yeah, focus on one, get it done.
I think it's important that, um, we have something when we go to spring town meeting, annual town meeting, and for the Housing Trust asks for money, people are gonna say, what are you doing with the money? And I think it's time that we have an answer for them as far as something.
You can try them.
I know, and I think that if we're, if we're aiming again for another, uh, annual town meeting to have something, it would be, it would be very helpful as far as being able to fund you further.
So the land challenge is one thing, but what is encouraging to developers when I talk to possible partners is when I say that we have money in the bank now. When we started, you know, late twenty, seventeen, eighteen, it, it was great. We got to support the town meeting, but then to try to be a partner with, with no money, it was very difficult. We're, we're at a point now, Brian, where we, we, we could step in and provide.
I'm not arguing the fact.
Yeah.
I'm just echoing what we've heard in the panelists and what's gonna come back up again. And let's, let's prepare ourselves in, in advance to have that answer.
Yes.
I think the other part of the answer though is with the new bond bill, right?
Yeah.
There's, there's money to go get.
Yeah.
Early bird gets the money.
I gotta ask you a question. Um, I don't know if it's a double edged sword. Is this also contingent on the town passing? Is that, that money contention upon the MBTA? Or is it because it's housing, it's exempt from that?
I imagine it's probably contingent, because they, they threatened to pull with, withhold all of the public housing subsidy money also.
It's insane.
Are you suggesting that the state should be running same?
I'm learning government doesn't.
So the, the considerations that the planes are similar to what they are in Newport in terms of you can maybe find some additional space? Maybe, uh, it's a, it's a budding some conservation space there, I don't know, but there, there's space that can be added to.
It is a budding, there's some town land in back of it.
Okay. All right.
Maybe there's a residential development.
I know, it's kind of on both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little trickier, but.
Okay, all right. So, so both of them have similar sorts of possibilities?
Yeah. I guess that's the same.
I think the wild card here is this extra state money. That's something that wasn't there before. So that leverage is, uh, what, what have we got? One point two? What have we?
Yeah.
A little higher than that. One point five?
Yeah.
Okay, money talks, you know?
You can almost buy a house.
Basically buys one building loss.
All right. Thank you for your time. So, all right, good. So when, when would you come back with us? Yeah.
What, what's the next action?
Yeah.
Our meeting.
Why don't we work, well, Muffin is a great liaison. Why don't we, we have some work and some talking to do and Muffin can check in with you. We, we're not gonna dial it. Okay, we'll put it on our action list. If, if not before, we'll, uh, say, say in a month, we'll just check with you and say, hey, what, when's? Yeah, we're, we're meeting at seven o'clock so we can talk about this and formulate a better time, timeline than me saying something right now without talking to. We've got a tickler for a month that we don't hear from.
Yes.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Not too bad.
Just picking up.
All right. The next topic is energy.
Guys look.
Don't I recognize?
These guys are all.
Lucky you guys.
They must be now.
Here is fine.
So we have, yeah, yeah. So Mark Capodona is with us from Colonial Power.
Correct.
And, uh, and you, your son?
Joseph.
Joseph, thank you. Um, so there, uh, as you may recall, we would do a P process to select a vendor to help us with our municipal aggregation. Colonial came on top. Happy to have them here. And so they'll, um, tonight is, is an introduction to the process. So Michael and Joseph will walk us through that and explain some of the decision points that you will have over the next few months as we, as we get this process underway. So I was about to share my screen.
So, good evening. My name's Mark Capodona, uh, from Colonial Power Group, Five Mount Royal Ave, Marlboro, Mass.
Joseph Capodona, Colonial Power Group, Five Mount Royal Mass. Thank you for having us.
So the first couple of slides just about us, so you get an understanding about us in the, in the kind of the marketplace. So we're, we're local, we're from Marlboro, Massachusetts. We started the company some twenty odd years ago. I did, it's just being thought of at the time. All we do is, just so you know, all we do is muniac. This is, we don't broker other energy, we don't do other things. We do municipal aggregation specifically, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Um, we're the largest provider of it. We've been working with all the agencies, believe it or not, the model that you're going to be embarking on. We created this model back in two thousand and six with the city of Marlboro was the first aggregation to go live. And since then, more and more have gone through. More good news for you, we take care of all the design, the implementation, the management of it. We just allow you to make the decisions. So think of us as, as no, no more, we carry the shovel, you guys tell us where to dig, we're gonna take care of that. We know exactly what needs to happen, how to do this. As I said, we've been doing this since the concept was created. Uh, right now, we're working, the next slide, if you don't mind, is just, this is just to show you, I don't know if you have it in your, in your packet.
Yeah.
This is who we work with across the state. But just kind of, just to give you an idea of the breadth of, you know, from some of the smallest communities out of the Berkshires to, uh, the largest community in Massachusetts, city of Boston. Just, just what, what it is. The next slide again is our, our last little, um, slide on us solely focused on aggregation. Our consulting agreements, uh, protects the municipality as well as consumer. I'll get into that shortly. Huge relationship with the D O R, the D P U. We have ten suppliers that we've been dealing with over time. They cycle in, they cycle out, uh, depending on market conditions. Uh, huge thing, this program's gonna allow customers to opt in and opt out without any fear penalty. So literally what the town is doing is, uh, and you've been through it, um, that, that huge energy spike um, back in the, back two, two winters ago. If, as long as the program is up and running, people can opt into this program, they can opt out of this program. There's one little hook here that I'm gonna mention, hot button item. This program is an opt-out, all of them are by statute, an opt-out municipal aggregation, meaning everyone on basic service will be sent to mailing, and as long as they, uh, do nothing, they'll be enrolled in the program. They can opt out at any time in the future or opt back in. But that's the way the program is set up. The, the last thing I wanted to mention, our ESA, we just went through a two-year process with all the suppliers as well as K P Law, making sure that it met all the requirements, uh, for cities and towns across Massachusetts. So next slide is what is community choice aggregation? So what we're embarking on is, is basically a, a buying group. Everyone in the geographic area of, of Manchester that's on basic service would be pulled into a buying consortium, if you will, and we take them out to the marketplace. Unfortunately, requires us to go through a small state process now, and I do mean small, by, by aggregation standards. So if, and lots of people have, if you're on third-party supply, I want to mention this now. Let's just say you have Constellation, ever, I mean, National Grid is still your, um, utility, but you have Direct or Constellation. You would not be a participant in the program out of the, out of the gate because you already have a supplier. If we were to switch you, we would be doing what we can't stand other suppliers, we would be slamming you and it's against the law. So this program, if you're on third-party supply, you want to be paying attention when the program starts so that you can opt into the program. We would not keep any customers out, but we just want you to know the way, you know, the, the laws work so that everyone's on the, uh, everyone understands how it works. So, and, uh, this is the big thing. So, but when I talk to many, many people, so Manchester by the sea, how are you gonna beat the, the utilities, right? Because every, everyone is, if, if it went on size for a, a, a commodity purchase, how would we ever beat the utility? Well, utility doesn't have what you have. You now have a buying consortium that you can get into a relationship with the supplier for any number of months slash years. And that means that supplier can serve you. The utility can go out for twelve months for fifty percent of their needs. But after twelve months, that, that customer may be there, may not be there, but it's not a long-term relationship. So these suppliers can actually dig in and try to find better pricing and, and other products. So what I'm here to say to you is, although most people will, will try to sell this to you is, oh, it's the biggest buying group. It's just not. It's really has to do with load profile and then market conditions and when you're going out. So again, it's a huge issue. Most people say, oh, it's the Walmart effect, not with the commodity. If I buy, if I buy one share of, um, uh, I shouldn't say share, but if I, if I buy gold at, at one oh one, if I buy ten ounces or a thousand ounces, it's one oh one. The same thing works here. This is an electricity futures market. Whether I'm buying ten thousand megawatts or a thousand megawatts, the price of energy is the price of energy. Uh, next slide, just gonna run through these benefits quickly. Choice. This is the number one thing that I'm going to push to you is, you're literally bringing a choice. Some people, some people in town are not going to like the opt-out nature of this program. Unfortunately, you'll never get the pricing that you need without an opt-out program. So, but I want to say this. Today, they don't have this choice in the marketplace. So everyone gets National Grid or you can go into third-party, which, not I, but the attorney general, the governor said, hey, stay away from these third-party contracts. Normally you end up losing. So this is a program that's gonna actually bring, you're no longer stuck with default, uh, basic service and it's just going out every six months. And I just want to tell you, I, I know everyone thinks, oh, they're trying to do the best for you. And unfortunately, by, by statute, they can't. So when the prices went through the roof, National Grid didn't do anything different than when they were two years earlier, when they were completely at the bottom of the barrel. National Grid would have bought, no question, many more, uh, much longer in the marketplace like aggregation did when, when prices were at rock bottom during COVID, the beginning of COVID. They'd only buy twelve months and that's what they did. When prices were high, they wouldn't have bought twelve months. They had no choice. They bought their twelve months and did exactly what they were supposed to do, put it in, and that's the price we got. And so again, this choice is huge. Control, for me, is finally, the towns in control. We're no longer subject, oh, National Grid this, National Grid this, did that, so forth. We get to make choices for, for us in the marketplace. You want to do something green, you want to do something longer, you want to have, uh, some other product, all of that is now available to you. You're no longer stuck, you are in control. You've never experienced it, but you can have a, a contract for three, four, maybe even five years. That prices are just what the prices are, and that's the town's program. Let's say National Grid's rate goes to thirty-three again. Everyone's in the town's program. I'm making it up. Maybe the prices go to six cents for National Grid. Believe the, the program. There's no financial responsibility for the town, whether there's ten people in it or four, uh, four thousand people. The rate is the rate. That's just the way it works. There's no tax dollars used. Doesn't cost you anything to create this program, run this program other than the town administrator's time and your time. So there's no cost as far as that goes. Funding, if you wanted to create, and lots of communities are starting to do this, uh, funding stream, you could add a fee to the price and you could create a energy manager position to possibly look at other energy projects. I don't know if you have anyone in that, that type of sustainability, but you could look at further, uh, energy efficiency projects in town. That's what the person can do as long as one of their tasks is dealing with the aggregation. But it does give you the ability to possibly, you know, fund a position or partially fund a position. And again, no penalties for consumers. Nothing. They can come and go as they, as they, if they choose. Leverage, as I mentioned, this is a larger buying group. It's plenty big to go out in the marketplace. You don't need any, you don't have to partner with anyone. You certainly could partner with someone if you wanted to, but, but most people won't tell you is, and, and it's going on right now. But if you partner with someone, either you're gonna subsidize them or they're gonna subsidize you. It's just the way it works. Either you have a low profile or they do. And we don't know until we get out in the marketplace and prove you know, what your low prof, profile would look like. All these contracts pro-consumer. Meaning this is no, there's no small print in this contract. We're, we're out there working on behalf of the town for their citizens. So there's no small print. There, there's just none of that. All public oversight happens here in front of the whole, uh, group so that we're not here to hide anything. We're here just to, once everyone gets educated, they're gonna see the benefits of aggregation, because almost at every turn, it allows, if for any reason, you're, you're not interested, you can opt out. There's no fear penalty. But if you're interested and you're paying attention, you certainly can use this as an advantage down the road. This is where we come into play the professional expertise about in-market conditions, when things are right, but the long term. Unfortunately, I was hoping that I would be able to sit in front of you when I started this company, that the energy markets would be much more, um, uh, transparent. It's terribly opaque. If I was to ask you today, what does the two-year energy future look nice in New England? No one would, because how would you know that? No one would know that. But I'm saying to you, many people may know what, what the, uh, the, the futures for oil look like. But for some reason, we, we've still been unable to get the energy futures out from behind this. But we, we're in the market every day. We, we deal with a hundred different communities in Massachusetts. So we're here to help. And now that means that we have the same knowledge as the supply community. Now it's an even, an even shape, because if they come, say, oh, this is a good deal, I'm gonna say, I don't think this is a good deal. It's always your decision whether or not you like it, but I just want you to know, it's a huge advantage having someone on the inside. Green power. Don't know yet if, um, if it's something of interest, uh, in the community, but you certainly can greet up your load while still possibly, uh, providing savings. Uh, just really depends on what the goals of the community are going to be, uh, moving forward. Meaning, hey, we'd like to add some green, some communities like to, I'll give you, uh, the city of Boston. They wanted to add some extra green, fifteen percent more green, still try to be underneath basic service, so they're delivering savings and renewables. And they, they've been able to get like fifteen percent more renewables in their, uh, standard product. Then they offer a, people for a fixed income or there, there might be, uh, you know, on a, a tight budget, less elasticity in their, uh, budgets. They've offered a, a meat, so, so the, the product everyone goes into has a little more green, they can opt down. Or the city of Boston wanted to say, hey, if we're gonna offer something, we're gonna offer the, the greenest, a hundred percent renewable product of fully massed class one. So it allows you, but that's Boston. That may not be Manchester by the sea. That's why I love this program. You decide what it is that you're looking for, and we're gonna bring you that pricing and show you whether or not, you may look at the pricing and say, that's not really for us, we're gonna change the product, perfectly fine. Um, energy efficiency funds. So there's a, there's a brand new, um, sheriff in town. It's called the Department of Public Utilities. And they have completely revamped, um, where they are. So for the last, this is one of the few times in life you're gonna find that procrastination has paid off and paid off dearly for you. And the only reason I'm saying that, if I was sitting here in front of you just a year ago, I would have told you to have a four-year wait in front of you. That's how long it was to take. Since then, the Department of Public Utilities has opened up a docket twenty-three sixty-seven and issued, uh, guidelines. Those guidelines, they're, they're not in stone, they're guidelines. But they're, they're, what they're trying to do is a hundred and twenty days from submittal to approval, which before you couldn't get a public hearing within under a year. So they true, just a one eighty and then some. So from my perspective, what's in front of you now allows you, one, speed, because you can get out into the marketplace at some point here, well, late this year, early next year, also allows you full control of a product. These energy efficiency dollars that are out there on a mass save, those, they're starting to have conversations about how might they be better spent? And, uh, I'm a firm believer that we don't need someone at the state telling us how to spell, to spend our energy efficiency dollars. You, you're better at that than, uh, than, than they are. And, uh, the, the only thing I want to mention is, it's a possibility going forward where it was not even to be discussed prior.
But that's separate, if I can interrupt.
We're only talking about supply right now, but down the road, I just wanted to mention it because they're opening the door to those kind of conversations, which is extremely exciting.
That's separate from that small surcharge that we could also add.
That is completely separate.
But you talked about the sustainability portion.
That's, that's a separate charge. This is already being paid for and wouldn't be any add at all. It's, you're, it's already on your bill for the mass save. And my my last slide is, this program is going to depend upon um education, education, and then we'll get to education. And the only reason I say, the the most important thing we do is, when this rolls out, um, I'm gonna be working with the administrator about how best, I know exactly how best it worked in Boston, what we did and what we had to do. What works in Boston, what works in Newburyport, um Amesbury is not gonna be what works here in Manchester. So by my goal is to work the administrative board, say, hey, listen, maybe we're gonna have a meeting at the uh Council on Aging, you know, on a Friday afternoon at two with coffee and donuts or what have you. Then we're gonna have a an open meeting at the, you know, Town Hall or something. We're certainly gonna take care of all, everyone's going to get a mailing. Everyone would get a, this is just another town, but literally a mailing comes to each and every person, that's on basic service, goes directly to them thirty days before the program ever starts, and then they have a decision to make. Is the hot button item though, if you take this mailing and you throw it in the trash, you're in the program. Now again, when the program starts, we're only gonna start when it's we're saving people money, we would never start a program over. But we'd be saving people money, but if you throw it in the trash, when you get this, you would certainly be in the program, because it's an opt out. Make sense? Then it comes down to, you know, we're gonna have PSA, I don't know if the local cable does anything, all of those things there. I don't know if you push out anything on Facebook or Twitter or Instagram or any of those things I know very little about, but we will give you all all of the details on that, so that you have all the content required. And now I'm here to answer questions, because that's talked for a long time, and I apologize for that.
We'll start with you, Brian.
Not a lot to comprehend, uh, but uh, it certainly seems like it's a good deal. Obviously, the cynic in me says, ooh, what's the catch? So uh, I'm just gonna listen a little bit more, it's uh, you know, right now, anything can save the town money uh, without costing the town any money to do that, seems like a no brainer, and that's most common sense, as you know, is is a fleeting commodity now, so. I'm I'm good at this point.
I I just, I I have just one basic question, on average or median, comparing apples to apples, what is the savings over, I don't know, say, three, four year period as you look at, because I know sometimes you're higher, most of the times you're lower.
Yes.
What is the median?
So so I'm gonna just remove that huge spike when when utility built it through the roof. And the reason I'm saying that, it just skews our numbers, somewhere between eight and ten percent, we normally consider you on the supply portion of your bill.
Right.
So National Grid, there's two portions of your bill, one's transmission and distribution, the other is supply. Right now, believe it or not, it's like sixty-five, thirty-five, sixty, forty, somewhere in that range, depending on rates. So on that forty percent of your bill, you could save ten percent.
Okay. Just needed to put that.
No, no, makes sense.
Fine. Uh, you're gonna wait to hear more.
Oh, no, yeah, I'm I'm just, I'm just, I'm thinking of what my small little place, my electric bill was this past month. I'm thinking, so anything I can, for a couple of dollars, my clock, I I I always think that anyone in the community is gonna have a problem in any of this. Uh, but they are gonna ask, what is the catch? Because that's, we're all a bunch of cynics.
And and I will say, early on, when the program started, that was difficult to getting out, there 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 are no catches though. I feel free to, I'm happy to deliver.
I'm just.
No, I and I fully get it, I I I started them, when I read the legislation twenty years ago, I said, this is a great opportunity and.
There's no such thing as a free lunch.
Well, and and there isn't a free lunch, right? I mean, it just depends if you like uh what what the program has to offer. The thing I love about the program, it allows them to make the decision. That's what I like. I'm the consumer, I have more choices in the marketplace, before I didn't have.
I can just tell you from my perspective, throwing that out would be something I would do, so I'm glad I'm already into the program.
All right, uh, Anne. Questions?
I guess I was a little misled early on when you were talking about shovels. I assume, I mean, our problem in town with National Grid has been their unwillingness to provide the materials for transmission. Um, our our compost site was delayed by four or five months because they couldn't get a transformer out here. I assume that has nothing to do with you.
Nothing, so, and I, it's a great question, that meaning, does this affect the T and D side of things? Believe it or not, the utilities make nothing on the supply portion, so it's not like you're taking revenue away from them starting this program. But I want to make sure I'm clear, by no means does this help or hurt you with National Grid's inability with supply chain issues, or or you know, as far as, you know, work product comes, this won't have any effect on that, good or bad.
Okay, so they're not gonna decide that if we're not buying our uh supply from them, they don't have to service us at all, which is.
One hundred percent correct, yeah, that's correct. They don't know whether you're getting third party supply from um an aggregation when they come out with the, when the storm's there, or constellation, or you're taking basic service. They're, for the last twenty-five years, they're a pole and wires company only, that's how they make their revenue or what they're, what they're best at.
That's too bad.
What they do.
Yes, correct, what they do.
Uh, Kathy?
Yeah, so um, as someone who owns an electric car, I'm eagerly awaiting this, so thank you. Um, I think from a town standpoint, when people start to remember um this, our first duty is to remind them, they already approved this at a town meeting. So the decision has been made. Now, it's it's how do we roll it out so that people, you know, so it's about reminding what they already approved. Um, so just to be clear, our decisions though, right, are what type of plans we intend to offer the town um and the timeframe, or could you just be clear on what are the decisions this board has to make?
So at this point, I'm gonna end up working with the administrator, because we need, and I know I was saying it's a short timeframe, we're still waiting for final guidance from the Department of Public Utilities on exactly what has to happen on these, I'm gonna call them tables, but it is, that we used to create a whole seventeen page plan, they don't want that anymore at all, these are simply tables. But what we will do, those tables will be hung, kind of showing who's gonna do what and so forth for thirty days. After that, but it's called that the um the high level infrastructure. After that, this board would vote on those, saying, yep, this is good. At that point, we would go on to the DPU and have a full filing. During that time that we're in at the filing, we would have some discussions around, what is it that we're looking for in a product? Like, just a meat product, or do we wanna add renewables? Uh, if we want to add renewables, what type of renewables, those kind of things.
So when we, um, so basically, we have to approve the rate tables that go.
Correct, yep.
And the types of plans, what, you know, what percentage of renewables.
You don't have to approve that at the beginning, not anymore.
You don't have to.
You do not.
So all we have to approve is the rate tables.
That's exactly, it is a bunch of tables, and you'll see them, they don't make a lot of sense if you're not in the business, but that's what they're going to be looking for, and we should be receiving guidance within three or four weeks. I mean that sometime right after uh Labor Day, we're expecting to get, okay, here's your guidance.
Okay, so then if um, is there any impact on the rates if we make decisions about, let's say we want three plans, you know, one really green, one basic, and one a little green, I don't know. Does that at all impact the rates or not, because you just, you're approved from the rate tables?
Uh, they'll have no impact on what your choo, what your choices are afterwards. And the good news is, we'll show you those, but what we call indicative, and then you'll be able to say, okay, these are the actual prices with our load profile. And it'll be a few weeks before we'd have final pricing, and you might say at that time, Kathy, you might say, nah, I'm not interested in making up the number right now, twenty-five percent. I like to bump that down to fifteen percent, and we can make that change.
Okay, so I guess my last question is, is this something we're gonna be, we expect to vote on before the end of this year?
Yes.
Yes.
I, uh, the answer is yes, I hope so.
Okay.
I I I I want to say that, because we are waiting on the Department of Public Utilities.
Depending on the opinions.
So.
Yes.
Look, how many weeks after the DP, Department of Utilities does that thing, do we need to make a decision? Like, what's what's the plus?
I would say with, I would say within a month, we'll have a plan, ready to go. And then after that plan is done, and we've worked through that, we would hang the plan so that everyone could look at it, thirty days is the uh statutory requirement by the department. Then after that, you'd vote on that plan, and we would move on from there.
So that's sort of my still number one.
Yeah, correct.
Now, number one is the rate table.
Yes.
Waiting, waiting for the DPU to do that.
That's correct, we're just waiting on the a final guidance, I guess is the the term from the department.
Okay, and then, so DPU guidance, and then the rate table.
That that's correct, all the tables that that the the town is gonna have. And before that, there's gonna be a small meeting.
Yep.
With Greg, myself, and the D O E R, they've changed the process ever so slightly. That's just the Department of Energy Resources, they just want to talk to you about renewables and things like that, they're kind of the think tank.
So.
But even incorporated, that's up to you.
I'm just trying to, what I'm trying to do is get a mental timeline. So let's say DPU guidance comes out, let's say.
September fifteenth.
September fifteenth.
Yep.
Rate table.
October fifteenth.
Like, to this board? Or, okay, so rate table another month, okay?
Yep.
And then um, expected uh beginnings of the communications to the community.
So he- here's where we'll go.
Right.
What was approved, we would then have that whole filing into the department.
So filing into the department is that.
Say, by the end of October, and then now, now you've hit the start the clock, November, December, January, by February, you have to have an order.
Okay.
And then it's gonna be market conditions on when we're going to start the program.
Okay, because the rea, what I'm getting at is, we have a lot of snowbirds here, right?
Yes.
So I don't want mailings to go out to people who aren't necessarily paying attention, so I just think we need to.
So we're probably in the springtime is when this is really.
I would, I would agree, that's most likely your timeframe, spring, early summer of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, that that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Okay. Sorry.
I think it would be helpful to actually have a timeline.
Yeah, why don't we work.
Put together a timeline, if you can take the action, let's add that to our action list, let's review as a board what the timeline is, because the communication's obviously really sensitive, and we want to make sure we hit those milestones, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's not a problem at all.
Jack?
So, once this thing gets rolling and we vote on a plan, rates about to get a rate, and this thing is rolling, how often do we revisit this?
So, believe it or not, so depending on timeline, but what I don't want you to think about, like, I'm gonna make that up a scenario for you. The the opening contract started, and given today's, it was a twenty-four month contract. Any point during that twenty-four months, I could be coming back to you and say, hey, listen, I'm gonna use now as a the timeframe. Hey, twenty twenty-seventh, uh, energy futures are priced at ten cents, you can bring down the price, and it's a thirty-six month term. I think we should go take a look at it. That could happen, in all honesty, three months into the program, and you guys sign that contract for twenty twenty-seven. Because energy futures are down on twenty twenty-seven. Uh, for some reason, Mr. Putin's sick, and they think he's gonna be passed away, and all of that goes away, right? So none of that premium's in the marketplace. So it's not like we wait until the end of the contract to to recontract.
Right, so if you can buy in at a better rate, you're gonna come back to us and say, hey, there's a better deal here.
The the next contract, that contract is the contract, but I would say, hey, listen, in twenty twenty-seven, if you're looking out for a twenty-four month contract, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, those those, those futures are now all in prices around ten cents. I think we should take a look at the market, run a pricing. Just because we run pricing doesn't mean that that we're gonna accept it. You you like what you see, we'll take those prices, it guarantees you a ten cents, and then someone's gonna have a decision to make when we announce the new rates two years from then, right? At that point, we'll announce the rates, people like the rates, that's great. If they don't like the rates, they opt out of the program.
So it's not a renegotiation of the contract we signed, but it's an early uh signing of a follow-on contract.
That is correct, if you wanted to, I would just explain to you, sometimes what you're talking about is a blend and extend. It can happen, but sometimes that's not beneficial to you, because you can't use the marketplace. And lots of suppliers take some extra margin when they're blending and extending, and they know that there is no one there to keep an eye on on their on their margin. It's difficult for me to see that, it's very easy for you and I to see it when there's competition.
So to that point, just verifying.
Yes.
So we lock in at a price, ten cents.
Yep.
And that's what the consumer will be paying, and then the market crashes.
Yes.
Right, we're, the town itself is locked into that ten, ten cents, but the individual consumer can opt out.
That is correct.
Back to uh.
Basic service, take that lower price, one hundred percent, and then say, you know, Mr. Putin loses his mind, he invades Germany or what have you, and rates go through the roof. They come back into the program. Again, it's all about choice, and one you you didn't experience back then, but you will have this choice in the marketplace moving forward.
What is the, how do you opt in and opt out, how does that work?
Very simple, again, town program, we're not trying to keep anyone out or in the program. So you can go on colonialpowergroup.com and opt in electronically, right on your phone, so forth. But for uh people without access to the internet, dial our one eight hundred number, eight six six four eight five eight five eight extension one, you're running out of the program. Or you keep that opt out card, at any time, you can just sign that card, put it in the self-addressed stamped envelope, it's already there, throw it in the mail, and you're out of the program. Simple phone call to us to get back in the program. I want to explain one thing, just because I don't want people to think it's it's, so the way energy works, we still don't have smart meters here in New England. So the utility doesn't know whether you used power when, they they take a meter read here, and they take a meter read there. Whether you use power during that, they have no idea, so if you opt out of the program, I don't know about you, but I look at my bill and like, oh, what did the kid do here? Like, I, you know, I, okay, I'd like to get out of the program, just had a meter read. So I can't get out until the next meter read, the following month.
I understand.
It's just, it's just the way it works, and unfortunately, people are like, oh, what are you, you know, you're trying to get an extra month. If we got to a smart meter situation, we may be able to get someone out the next day. Right now, we just don't have that ability, unfortunately.
Well, it's good that people know that.
Yeah, no, and that's, you know, all the documentation, make no mistake.
Yeah. And you guys will provide as in-depth education as we need.
Absolutely, I I I, if you want to call any of our communities, whether we come out once, three, ten times, we're gonna make sure that everyone has the information that that they require, period. Because without it, it 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 can't be a town pro, we're no better than the third party suppliers.
So the contracts that are signed, you said twenty-four months, thirty-six months. Who's the smart guy on our end that says this is the best deal? He's like a senior.
That's what I'm saying.
You. You'll say, this is what's available, this is what I think you should do.
Correct, and I'm gonna give you a perfect example. Many times in the in the energy world, the supplier will call you, the market's starting to come down. And they call you when the rates have come from from twelve cents down to ten cents. We're in the market, we know they're going to eight, but they call, oh, I got you a great deal. How do you know? We're not at the bottom of the market yet. And that's what they, that's how they end up taking the extra margin. It's just a tough.
Okay, but it it could be a twelve month deal, could be twenty-four, could be thirty-six. So not only is it the rate, hey, you want ten cents for uh twelve months, or do you want uh eleven cents guaranteed for twenty-four months? Is.
That's exactly.
Managing the risk, and I, all right, okay.
So in essence, you're just a, like, a financial advisor, but with energy.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, you, so we're we're, for for me at the beginning, we're we're nothing more than a consultant, at the end, we kind of, we morph us into a broker as your consultant, meaning, hey, here's the marketplace, and this is what we know about it, and this is why we think this is the the right thing to do right now. We've gone from thirty-six and forty-eight month contracts down to twenty-four month, just because of marketplace conditions.
Okay, and one other question, so you got this fifty percent green, hundred percent green, you've got all these things. Does a town generally offer like three or four different?
No, normally three, normally three project, uh, three products is the max. And the only reason, because there's a lot of confusion around that. And that, and I want to apologize, because I know I use a lot, I'm in it all day, so when I say mass class one or or recs, and I, you know, if someone has a question, I'm more than happy to explain it. It's just so early in the process, probably don't need to waste your time.
No, I I don't want to get into details.
I would too, but the answer is, three is more than enough for most people.
And I don't know, they put out three, and maybe one doesn't let, just languishes, people are doing one or three in the middle, I don't know.
Okay, John, you're spot on, and that just, everyone likes to have the options, I, they're not well, um, they're they're not well, um, participated, and I'll tell you that.
All right. Other questions from the board? Anne, Anne's good.
Uh, I don't, I don't have any more questions.
I wanted to mention two things, because people that have solar on their roofs, this program works with solar on your roofs. If you have solar, it it will work. Uh, all of the budget billing, if you have a, if you're on a a low income discount or any of those things, those are all utility programs, and they're all stay in place. So you don't have to worry about, oh, if I'm in the program, am I gonna lose my solar credits? No, you won't, those are all things that are utility programs, and they all stay in place.
Okay. Good. Good.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, any update and you wouldn't regret it?
Yeah, we'll be in touch, Brian.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, running a little bit behind, but not bad. Um, let's see. Next is the senior transportation follow-up. And we had a discussion last week from a presentation or a discussion with Icadea. Who came by and chatted with us about what they had with regard to, I think, a dial-a-ride program to perhaps supplement. Um, the offerings that we had here. And I think Greg, you were gonna, well, I, I see that Nancy is here. You were gonna chat with Nancy. And see how things might fit together, how, how things might complement each other in terms of broadening offerings to the senior, senior folks here.
Yeah.
So.
So I think Nancy, she has one of our drivers here as well.
Oh, good.
So they can talk a little bit more detail about the current programming. Uh, and we can talk about how um it might be possible to, to do this sort of complimentary. Merging of the two programs.
Sure.
Um, do a little bit of troubleshooting on that. Uh, so Nancy, wanna start off just so again, sort of high level of current, current programming and services it's providing?
Yeah, we have the Council on Aging Vans. Currently, we have four of them out there. Um, two twelve C. An A seat, and then the brand new electric van, which is seven seats, diesel without wheelchairs. Uh, with wheelchairs, the seating goes down. So we run Monday through Friday, eight thirty to three. On Monday and Tuesday, when there's only one van running. On Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, there's two vans, we're eight thirty to four. From January first to June thirtieth of this year. We all combined, including my car, 'cause I'm on the road too a lot. We did over about eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight miles. And provided rides to three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight riders. So we're busy, and Steve can agree that we can go anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred miles a day.
Okay, uh, for free, whatever vans are in there. In other words, if you got two vans on the road, that's two hundred miles.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
Depending what.
Yeah. On it. Okay. Alright, so those are the specifications right now. There are a couple of things, I guess, that came up last week. One was important about expanding hours or shifting some van hours around such that something could be worked out between. Uh, say, three, three to six or six thirty timeframe. In other words, would some van on some days start later? So we're not adding the hours of, how many total van hours have we got here, like fifty?
Little over fifty, fifty-three hours or something.
Fifty-three hours.
So.
Yeah.
Where's the, the need? Show me the need in expanding till six o'clock. Cuz I've never, in twenty-four years, had somebody call and say, I need a, a ride for a medical at five thirty. On Thursday.
I'm talking about a ride anywhere, for any reason.
Well, a ride anywhere, you know, Department of Elder Affairs gives us guidelines. Especially when we're using vans that are purchased through the eighty-twenty grant. I report to the state every month, on the miles the vans go, the number of riders, and, and so on. Um, so when I, in the business of giving somebody a ride to the Century House at six o'clock on a Friday night. That's just not what Elder Affairs wants us to do.
That's an interesting fact.
Yeah, so Greg, are there restrictions on?
Kada.
Well, no, I'm asking, so Nancy is bringing up the point that there may be restrictions on what we can use our town vans for. Okay, that didn't come up.
That was never, this is the first time I've heard it.
Yeah.
There's always a restriction on what Kada vans can do.
Kada's always our nine to two, I believe.
I'm just curious, but as far as a trip to the mall or something like that, or?
We go to the mall once a month. We go to Walmart once a month. We go to Trader Joe's once a month. We go to Wegmans. We, you know.
Right, but those, those are not medical calls, but those.
Those are special trips. That's when I have two vans on the road. Wednesday and Friday are typically special trips.
I think what we're trying to understand is what's the difference between the types of special trips we do now? Versus a special trip that someone might wanna take between four and six o'clock at night? What, so those special trips are allowed, even though they're not medical. You're saying taking people to dinner is not allowed. Uh, we're trying to understand.
Yeah, but wanna go to Market Basket at five P M.
For a taxi service, that's really a taxi service.
Yeah. That's in effect what we're kind of looking at here, a ride service that people can take for. Any, well, for whatever their reason may be, to see a friend or something like that.
Yeah, that was the other thing that came up, John. Right, so a lot of people, they may wanna go see a friend who's in a rehab, you know, temporarily, visit them, et cetera. And um, so.
Yeah, but if somebody wanted to go, as you said, to Market Basket at five o'clock in the afternoon. That's doable?
No, it's not within the schedule that I'm.
Oh, I know it's not within the schedule, but.
So, but I don't know of any other council on aging, senior center that provides transportation that does what you're, what you're.
Dial-a-ride does.
Dial, dial-a-ride within what their hours are.
Yeah, they, they have limited hours, but they, they're not saying, whatever you want, wherever you wanna go.
You're, you're saying, you're saying that you go to Wegman, Wegmans once a month. What happens if someone wants to go twice a month?
They, we, uh, we pretty much try and meet everyone's needs. Is it cost-effective to put one person on a van? And drive them all the way to Burlington?
We don't think it is. But perhaps Kada.
I doubt they'll do it. I doubt they'll do it.
I know, I know they try to put people together in rides. They try to.
Well, they have, they have the economies of scale cuz they're dealing with multiple towns.
Yeah, they are.
So where we might not be able to accommodate certain things cuz we're so small, they're doing a number of towns, so they may have, they may be able to fill up, you know. Um, a van.
As far as like.
Yeah.
I think Kada only fills up as far as P.
Right, I mean Wegmans, Wegmans is probably not the best example. Trader Joe's is in P P, okay? So we may take people once a month to, to Brian's point, if somebody wants to go once a week. Today, it sounds like we can't offer that, so Kada would be an option and.
Or if somebody wants to go at a time when the vans are going somewhere else.
Exactly.
I think that's.
There's flexibility.
There's more flexibility.
To our defense, nobody has ever called and asked that. So I really think there needs to be a needs assessment done to show the need.
Well, I think a lot of people tell that the vans stop at three or three thirty, so they haven't asked, but you know they can't, but.
The, Greg, let me ask you, is, uh, we, if, is there a contract we have to sign? For the vans? For Kada, if you decide to go that route? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have to redirect the money.
Yeah, or six months or? Um, that's a good, I don't know for sure. Let me say a minimum of a year.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, can we do a trial and redirect the money we're sending to the N B T A to Kada?
Exactly. We're spending the money anyway.
It doesn't, it wouldn't, what we're saying is it wouldn't cost the town any additional money. Because we can redirect the funds that we send to the N B T A to Kada and try it, see if people will use it. And now we can redirect the funds back to the N B T A, you know.
In essence, we're already paying for Kada.
Basically, the money's just.
We're taking it from one pocket to putting it in another, and that allows you a little bit more flexibility with some of the vans they do now.
The concern, the concern, I guess, that I have is that we've got hours that are essentially nine to three.
Nine to four, eight thirty to four.
And so does Kada. We're trying to buy that other two hours somehow. Now, Kada, I don't think does that, or they told us that, that they pretty much have the same hours that we have.
So I thought we.
I thought we were more flexible. I don't know, wha- whatever state or federal agency that we report to says you've got to only use it for certain situations. And I mean, maybe you have a medical appointment at four o'clock, that's possible. But I'm still kinda getting to the fact that, yeah, you want to visit somebody or any of a number of reasons. That would be after three thirty. And I'm hearing that that's kind of hard to do. At least with our vans because of the way they're financed.
Also, my experience has always been that, uh, as soon as people get a taste of what they can do.
They do it?
They'll start doing it more. I mean, right now, they know that there are limitations and schedules with the C O A at this point, in the vans. Once they get a taste of the flexibility that Kada allows. The more, it's gonna be word of mouth, and more and more people are gonna take advantage of it. And then we can look at what we do own as far as our inventory, and what, uh, uh, okay, that's how we can reallocate some of that.
Right, so we're trying to figure out if we can leverage Kada to free up our vans to do. To, to service more of our folks in different ways than we're doing now. That's, that's really what we're trying to.
Yeah.
What, what is the impact of Kada on, on the Manchester Council on Aging? Would you, would you be doing reservations through them, or, or is this just something entirely separate? Um, that we're getting essentially for free?
The latter.
So has anyone talked to the Essex Council on Aging to see what their um success is with dial-a-ride?
Uh, with Essex Cat? No, I have not spoken with those, those folks at all. I don't, I don't know. No one here has. Greg, have you had any feedback at all from, from them?
Not directly. Nancy was giving me some, some feedback. I haven't spoken to them directly.
Okay, but that's a fair question. Would like to know how, uh, uh, those folks feel, feel the thing is going. Um, they're in a slightly different, well, you know better than I do. They're in a different situation. That's all they've got.
Yeah, we're, we're not talking at all about eliminating our vans. We were just trying to see if we could leverage what we think is essentially a free resource from Kada, right? To do some of the day-to-day stuff, to free up our vans, to service more Manchester residents in a more flexible way. So we haven't, we haven't discussed. Again, I'm not turning away anyone. Right, anyone.
Okay, but.
Excuse me, I, I, if somebody wants to go visit a friend in Danvers. That's not part of what our Council on Aging can do.
Yes, we take a lady over to Brookspie Village a couple of times a month when she asks to go to visit friends. We've taken people to nursing homes on a daily basis to visit their spouses. We, we take adult children to visit their mother in a nursing home. We take people to funerals. Then ask for a ride to a funeral. There isn't really anything we don't do.
How many drivers are in, giving time do you have on the road?
Two. Close to myself, for the old one.
Between vacations or sickness or health issues.
We have a per diem driver who will cover if there's somebody on vacation.
Now, I, I mean, we know that you've got two vans on the road, but, you know, half the time, they're structured for specific trips. So then there's one flex van, and the other one is Market Basket is Thursday, and that's where they're going, and that van is gonna be tied up with that for. I don't know, the day or the morning, or for a period of time.
Because then he has afternoon runs.
Right, right, I understand. But there are, there are structured things that, that take a van then out of, out of flexible, flex, flex time sorts of things.
Let me ask a question. If you had, um, if some of the vans were freed up from some of the one-to-one rides. Would you schedule more planned trips or not?
We could, but, you know, it's, again, it's good to have at least half the van full. To go on a trip. We're not gonna take two people for, you know, unless it's Beverly Farms or somewhere for an ice cream. We do, we do ice cream rides and we get six to, to eight people for those rides. So. There isn't a whole lot more we can schedule.
That's where the Kada may, the dial-a-ride may be helpful. If someone really wants to go somewhere and it's just that one or two people. Even if they have to pay two dollars, you know, for the ride.
Yeah, K K is two bucks, you know that.
It's two bucks, right.
But again, it's true to leave, go to leave.
Well, I don't think, it's not taken away from the services that we have now. It's just, it's a backup, it's there if somebody needs it, and it's basically great.
We, I think that what we're looking at is, we wanna expand services to our seniors. And options to our seniors. And I think that there is, I, I don't feel a need to prove anything at this point. Okay, I have to look at what is in the best interest of the seniors in, in the community, and I think that flexibility and options. This is just my opinion, are, are what our seniors are looking for. And uh, and if it doesn't work in a year's time, we opt out.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if, like, just for a start, you know, you say you've gone to Brookspie, and there have been other things. Uh, where people have gone to various things that aren't medically related. Okay.
A lot of everything is medically related.
Okay, and that's good. So I, I'm interested in seeing how you might be able to structure one of the vans, one or two days a week. To work a twelve to six shift and get that four to six time period into the mix somehow.
Have to hire another driver, cuz I don't know if the drivers we have would want.
Well, you haven't asked them though. So you'd have to ask them and see what the story is. But maybe, maybe you can get somebody to say, yeah, I'll work, I'll work twelve to six.
So if there's no rides scheduled and he's on twelve to six, and at two o'clock, there's nothing else happening. And he goes home, we're still paying until six.
Well, that's the case. Oh, we do, they're all on, they're all on this.
Let's talk to Cheryl over at the beach.
So, you know, it, it might, it might even be just a seasonal thing, you know, I know, you know, the seniors in my family, they don't like to go out. When it's dark, a lot of times. But during the summer, when it's light until, you know, nine o'clock, you know, maybe it's, it's, you know, when. You know, a seasonal thing, when you can expand the hours. It's also about the, we have fewer people in town during the dead of winter, and people don't like to go out as much. So, you know, if we can try something um at, at a time that makes sense, uh, maybe that's another way to think about it.
I, I, I'm just trying to canvas your drivers, and maybe there's one, one person that might say, okay, I'll give that a try. And we schedule that for like maybe just two days a week. That's taking, taking a van off of the road on a Monday, on a, on a nine to, nine to twelve period. But that's starting at twelve and going twelve to six, so it's still six hours approximately, whatever it is. And let people know and see how that, that works. But I, you know, you have to ask your drivers. I mean, Steve says, the Steve, right?
Yes.
Not his cup of tea.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know about the other guys.
Do you have a busy season, Nancy? Is there, what, one time of the year that the vans are busier versus?
Every day is different. I don't know. And then tomorrow morning, it'll be a completely different schedule. You don't know. You don't know who's gonna wake up with a broken tooth. You don't know who needs, you know, to go to the veterinarian with a sick cat. So you just go with the flow and make it work.
Other questions? I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, we're not jumping into Kada or anything right away here. We're just trying to get a feel for what's going on. And the afternoon thing, I think, is still something we should explore because that was where we felt it was the most leverage.
Oh.
The biggest change that we could offer seniors.
My question is, if someone has a problem with Kada, how do they know who to go to to complain? So that Nancy isn't responsible for a service that she doesn't control?
We'll look at Diane's Kada, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, it would be somebody at Kada, but, you know, but I mean. To that, yeah. To that point, I think we need to talk with the folks at Essex. Are we gonna feel for, cuz that, or Hamilton, or it's which, all of those folks are using this. And see how it's, I don't know how long they've had it. They've had it for a couple of years. Um, and, and see what they think. But in the interim, I'd like to see if we can't do something with an afternoon thing. And to Kathy's point. But in the interim, I'd like to see if we can't do something with an afternoon thing. And to Kathy's point, I agree, it's a seasonal sort of thing at this point.
Maybe I would just, you know.
I know, I I I tend to agree with you on that. Once you get into the wintertime, there's less demand for that sort of thing anyway.
So Greg, I think we we need you to figure out what the minimum period of performance is, right? Um so that, you know, can we do a trial? But I I do remember the woman from uh CADA saying that it it takes a while for the service to kind of stick. You know, um.
It's just about a year.
Yeah, yeah, just say like a year.
You know, and if you stop right now, we're coming into the middle of the winter.
Right, right.
It's not gonna be op optimal time.
Right.
We're not gonna revisit it for another year, so we'll have all next summer.
Well, I think that we should, I would like to get some answers from CADA as far as who is the point person, who becomes the, do we have a town rep that someone can call if there is a problem? Uh I'd like to hear about what's going on at Essex, Hamilton and Ipswich.
Yeah, can we position ourselves to be ready to offer something in the spring?
Yeah, by the time spring rolls around, we can pull the trigger.
Yeah, yeah.
Was there any specific uh contract time? I can't recall.
We're gonna find out.
Okay. No, I I don't need a link to the contract. When you start, you can do this.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think there's.
Okay, it could be tomorrow, it could be next year, it could be.
Yeah, so I mean, we can confirm with Melissa. Depending on her budget, I think she's, I feel she's got some flexibility.
When, when do we pay the MBTA?
Right. Well, that's a good point.
Uh I think it's quarterly.
Okay, well, that's that's short enough.
So if we make a decision.
Give us a note of the story.
Five months or so and then.
Yeah.
Greg, just put, maybe just add it to our action list to revisit it at a timeframe that makes sense. I I'm not sure what that would be at this point if it's.
I think there are some, there are some short answers that, like, what other towns' experiences have been that we could get and and in short order.
Yeah, so we need answers from other towns. We've got several questions to ask of CADA. And Nancy, if you could check with your other drivers and say, hey, is a six to nine thing for one or two days a week? How can we work out something like that? And see how that works. Certainly, we can get in touch with various seniors and say there is going to be rides available in that the three-hour period that there wasn't ride available you know, for one or two days a week. Because I I'd be interested in seeing how that might evolve. Wherever folks may may want to go. And you say Brookspie or, you know, visit, visit a friend. Um I understand the challenge where, you know, you've got only one person or two people on a bus. CADA deals with that on a regular basis. And one of their comments was is they are shrinking down the size of their vehicles because they realize that's a challenge. It is. And we've got what, fourteen, two fourteens?
Twelve.
Two twelves.
Eight and a seven. And and one eight that's going out as surplus.
Yeah. Right. Okay, so, yeah, they're big vehicles for like one person, but Kate's been experiencing that challenge. We did ask that question with regard to Essex or Hamilton and they say, yes, sometimes it's only one or two people in the car. So.
So do you wanna revisit this in a month or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You wanna put that down for a month?
September. And then by that time, hopefully, we'll have answers. Uh a survey of the other towns and who's responsible for it.
Yeah.
I mean, we can make a decision and say we're not, we don't want to implement it until first of the year or something like that.
Any questions or comments out there? Uh yes, ma'am.
Yeah, my name is Pat Clutter and I'm with the Lincoln Street. And um first, I want to commend Nancy for doing a fabulous job with all the medical appointments and rescheduling and rescheduling for the town residents. I know um she primarily um takes care of medical appointments. She goes to Manchester, Gloucester, Danvers, Peabody, and I think that's it, for the medical appointments. Maybe I'm wrong. And um I wasn't aware that she does other activities for people. I've never seen it posted in the paper and I don't think other seniors know about it either. So maybe that would be something to do is say what other activities she provides for other than medical appointments.
If somebody calls and asks a question, we answer it. Ask the question. That's all I can say.
Well, I think it would be good to provide information to the public on what you offer.
In in a general sense, you mean?
A general sense, yeah.
In addition to the newsletter and what's in the cricket and Gloucester Times?
I've never seen those activities posted outside of medical or any type of.
Yeah. I mean, they're there. We send them. Twelve and it's, it's.
About going to the vet and all this stuff?
Well. Um.
But I mean, that would really be a great thing to do for seniors.
Yeah. Plenty of people call and ask, Pat. I don't, I, you know, we, they call and ask.
All right, I'm gonna give an example of a senior. Uh we have a ninety-year-old lady. She just uh had her ninetieth birthday. And she was hoping that she'd hang up her car keys on her ninetieth birthday. She lived in Essex for several years. She belongs to groups over there. And she also um attends on a regular basis um dedicated activities over there and she would like to continue. She uh wanted to hang up her car keys because she didn't want to cause any safety issue down the line as she travels through her ninth um you know, generate ninetieth, ten-year decade, her ninth decade with all the wonderful things that can occur and surprises. She has no way to get there to keep up with all these activities. And she was hoping uh the select board would have voted her CADA. Um and unfortunately um this is where we're at. Pat, the woman is my husband's cousin. Okay, she's been on transportation by the family and and she gets.
Need to get a little gentleman.
Through the, through the chair, please.
All right, all right, that's enough. Yes, please.
All right, so um that's an example of one of the residents in our town. Um safety is an issue for seniors. Um if they don't have alternative transportation as they age in place. Look at the news, you turn on the television, look at all these people, seniors running into buildings, running into bodies of water, et cetera, et cetera. If they had alternative transportation, maybe they would have taken it. Another thing, last Friday, I went on a trip to Rockport um with the van. And we were told pickup time was roughly around ten fifteen. And we would return roughly um around, we would be in Manchester at two o'clock. So we said, fine, we'll see all the shops. When we got to Rockport, we were told pickup time was gonna be twelve forty-five. So we never even got to see the shops on Main Street and people were really upset. Um they said, gee, if we had catered, we could have done cater and seen all the shops and had forty-five minutes extra and still be back in Manchester at two o'clock. Um so I don't, I don't know what that deal is.
Okay. Nancy, you're aware of this or?
Well, no, I'm not. I wasn't, I wasn't told that that happened. So that's, if I know, I will ask the driver what happened and why, why did that happen? So if I'm not there, I don't know what's going on. My my last conversation with him was Friday morning before he left and I said, give the ladies a couple of hours. So that's all I know.
Well, seniors want to remain independent. They want to go when they want and where they want. And CADA does offer towns outside of what we provide. If they want to go to the movies when they want, they can go. You know, if they want to go to Salem, you know, wherever they want to be, if CADA comes.
Well, that's, that's why we're talking about that. That's really.
In summary.
Bottom line. Okay, uh I don't know. All right, make make it quick because.
I am.
Okay.
In summary, as elected officials for all senior residents in the town, please revisit this very important transportation alternative. We're not asking to replace our council on aging. We're just asking to complement it. And this is to promote safety, continue personal in- independency for all seniors in the town. Also, the cost is awesome. It's like being offered a blue plate special at a complete markdown rate. Thank you for listening and for your time. And I did speak to Essex residents. I do go over there to the senior center. And the senior residents I've talked to, they love it. They said sometimes it's not exactly on time, but they do like it a whole lot.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Yes, another comment? Sure.
I'll try and make it quick here. Um we've used Nancy's service for years and years and she has accommodated us every single time. I'm talking probably in the last ten years with my wife's appointments and all that, she's probably done three hundred trips for us. And that's not exactly. So the thing is, I, she has taken us other places too. Okay, and she's right there. She said, well, the drivers are busy. I'll take you in my, my car. She picked her up and picked us up in her personal car. It's a wonderful service. Um but of course, we'd all like a little more, you know, if we can get another service as well. But I wouldn't want to have another service interfere with Nancy. And uh I don't understand why there can't be two, but we wouldn't want anything to happen to the service that we have now because I'm very pleased with it.
Okay. Thank you for that.
To that point, I don't think anyone's has any intentions of of getting in the way of the of the council on aging. We're looking to do a supplement and offer, you know, wider ranges and options. Expand. There's a good word.
Yeah. Expanded a revenue-neutral, right, more or less. So good. So we we have kind of a to-do list, I think, Greg. Of just a few things and we can revisit this in, say, a month.
Yes.
And see, see, see where we're at and see what the story is. But, yeah, Nancy, to the point about the afternoon, check with the other drivers, because I'm really curious about maybe adding a few extra hours that really, there is no service for any, for anybody at this point. Set us apart.
Sure.
Good. Um any other questions? I think we're set with that.
Outside the world.
Yeah, good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for. Okay, next item. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Presentation.
So, yes.
That's a big deal.
So for the the eighth year, um due to the very excellent work of our town accountant Andrea, you know, um we've been awarded um certificate of excellence from the Government, Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. Um it uh it it really is a good benchmark and an honor for us to receive this award. Um it it awards our annual financial report. You know, audit typically has a bigger name than that, a comprehensive report. Um but we do have it online as well, so it is available for anyone to take a look at it. It it does provide a lot of information, both um last year's expenditures and revenues, but also a ten-year trend, our indebtedness, et cetera. Um but I think it it's, it should be reassuring to to our residents that um that we are um following proper procedures and and accounting and keeping track of expenditures and revenues, et cetera. And that we're presenting it in a way that that meets some pretty high standards that the GFOA probably gets. So um nothing more to do than just break that announcement and make it known. And and kudos again to Andrea for her hard work and working with our auditing firm um to put this together every year. And we certainly hope we'll be receiving award number nine as we've put together this year's report.
Is this, when it says the eighth time, is this over what, over what periods?
It's an annual.
So it's eight years in a row?
Yeah.
Yeah, is is this a um, you said it's available online. Is this is different than what we get for our town meeting?
Yes, it is different. It's much more comprehensive. It's a deep dive.
Yeah, could could you send us the link? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would be interested.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't we get hard copy?
Yeah, we have, we can, we do have hard copies as well.
I'm pretty sure I have a hard copy.
Yeah, I don't, I'm I'm not aware. Was this some sort of a formal presentation or is this just something that comes in the mail?
It does come in the mail. Yeah, nothing more formal than that. They do send us a plaque, which is my face, but uh but yeah, it's, it's, it's basically a letter. And you you submit, yeah, you submit the report and they review it. They have it, uh I believe, a three-person team reviews every audit. They uh review for potential. So this is the process.
Hey, well, certainly congratulations to Andrea and her small team.
Yes.
Small but mighty team.
Mighty is 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 correct.
Yeah.
So was there any recognition within, certainly the town's on the website, but within, say, Town Hall here at all or anything?
We haven't done that, but.
You should.
We can.
Yeah, that's uh one of your staff meetings or something. I think that would be inappropriate.
Yeah, back, the next one is the Swans, so.
Okay, all right, surprise her. And then congratulations again to Andrea. That's great. So she's really set a high bar for herself. I mean, it's gone and.
She has.
Yeah. So that's great. Okay. Um next thing is uh appointments. And we have some committee appointments that we have to make um this evening. And as we all know, this year is probably a little bit different than past years because we made a concerted effort to kind of reach out and find new folks that might be interested in participating in the governments of our, of our community. So um I think we've exceeded our expectations because we had a lot of folks that raised their hands. And so we've had to make some difficult decisions, I think, over the last few months because we had more folks than we had vacancies and really in past years, that has not been the case. But um that's, that's where we're at this year and so we we've had to do that and we've got three different committees here that we have to fill um build positions for. And to that end, one of the, one of the things that we did last, last, at the last meeting was that we had folks that we didn't necessarily know, they were new folks and we didn't necessarily know who they were. And we had really had to go to our committee chairs to find out what their thoughts were with regard to all of the applicants because they're the ones that were closest to uh their incumbents. And had spoken with some of the new folks, which we were just meeting for the first time when they, when they came by for the brief interview. So uh we'll start with Bike and Pet and I guess Kathy is the um liaison for the Bike and Pet Committee. And what are your thoughts and the chairperson's thoughts, et cetera?
Yeah, so I spoke with one of the co-chairs and um they were thrilled to have four applicants who are highly qualified for the three open positions. Um and um basically, uh I'm gonna give you their top three, but the fourth person who's not selected, they really would love for that person to reapply in uh in the next cycle because they're anticipating another opening, uh because there's another multi term incumbent who, um you know, so there'll be another open call for Bike and Pet next year and they really would like the person who's not selected tonight to reapply. Um and also attend the meetings um and just get to know more about the team. So the the three that they recommend are um reappointing. So the, the three that they recommend are, um, uh, reappointing Terry Kellman. Um, appointing Anne Geier, because she's been participating, um, as a valued member of the team, like kind of ad hoc. She's been, uh, contributing quite a bit, um, over the past six months or so. And, uh, Peter Chobanian, uh, because he brings, um, a school connection with one of the people who left bike and ped. Um, they had a connection to the schools and, and, uh, you know, they were looking for another parent to kind of fill, um, fill that role. So he is a, is their selection for the third slot. And so that leaves Christian, uh, Gahl with, uh, without an appointment, uh, this time around. But they really were impressed with Christian and would love to have him, uh, join the team at a later date. And certainly encourage him to, um, call into the meetings and learn more about what the team does.
Good. Would you like to make a motion?
I will. I move that the board appoint Terry Kellman, Anne Geier, and Peter Chobanian to the bike and pedestrian committee for terms to expire on June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And John says yes. So good. Those three folks, um, I guess that will come from your office, uh, Greg?
Yeah.
Let them know what the, what the story is. Great, thank you. All right. So next, uh, the next committee is community preservation. And, uh, I chatted with the chair, co-chair, chairpersons there, was in touch with, uh, Jack Burke and, uh, who is it, um?
Oh, Charles McDowell.
Chair McDowell. Yes, okay. And, um, I got, got their thoughts. Um, we've got three, three folks for one position, two new applicants and, uh, one, one incumbent. And, um, all of them, Jack, Jack and, uh, Jack spoke quite, quite eloquently with, with all of them, felt they all, uh, were, were highly qualified. I think that, uh, he felt that he wanted to get some, some new, new faces in on the, uh, on the committee, at least for this, uh, this current year. And has, uh, recommended, uh, Rosemary Costello, um, who would be a, a new person to that, uh, to that group for this slot. So she's, she's got some background, especially in historic preservation, having worked, worked in that area professionally. And she also happens to sit on the historic, uh, district commission. So, um, uh, Rosemary would be the person, uh, the incumbent, uh, Woody Kelly, and I see that Woody's here. And Woody has been a, a founding member, I think, of the C P C, uh, has been, has been an active in that group for a very, very long time. Um, and we certainly thank him for all of his work, but there will be new opportunities, because this is a, um, this is a position that is an at-large position. Um, that would, that would go and would certainly look forward to his, uh, contributions, uh, again. So, so, and also the other, the other person that had applied was Donna Brewster. And, uh, she, she, uh, presented very strong credentials here. There are o- opportunities for many other committees here in this town, in this, in, uh, in town as well. There are probably about a dozen openings that are still there. But, uh, we'd encourage her to take a look at that, or also the community preservation, because there will be slots that will be coming up in the next year or so. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rosemary, uh, Costello to the community preservation committee as an at-large member for terms to expire since June 2027.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And John says yes. Okay. And now, um, the Harvard Advisory Committee.
Harvard Advisory. So I talked to, uh, Kyle down at the chair. And he has two incumbents that want to get reappointed, uh, Philip Leahy and Stephen Lawver. And, uh, he's been very happy with their performance, thinks they're an integral part of the team with everything they have going on. And, uh, he would like to see them reappointed. Um, and I wouldn't want to break up a committee that's working. Uh, Tony, uh, is a very strong candidate, and I hope that he will hang on and, you know, we'll fit him in there somewhere along the way. Um, so I would make a motion to re- reappoint Philip Leahy and Stephen Lawver to the Harvard Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion?
Um, I'm just going to suggest that, uh, Tony Dolan, um, might get in touch with Sarah Creighton on the Harvard management. Um, I'm sorry, I can't come up with the full name of that group, but, um, it's not a group that's formally, uh, appointed by the select board. And, um, they have important work to do.
When, when do they meet? Do you know?
But they, they haven't met over the summer. They're waiting for some additional work from the, uh, consultants from UMass Austin, but I think they're, they're probably having a meeting in September.
So can we reach out to Tony and maybe suggest that to him? Okay, great. That'd be great.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm trying to think where our, we didn't vote yet. Okay, yeah, yeah. Any further comments, uh, Anne?
Nope.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And John is yes. Okay. So that takes care of the three committees that are up now. I don't know. Are there other committees that are pending, Greg, or we'll stay tuned?
Stay tuned, um, we're getting, there are some vacancies still.
Okay.
A few doors.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, um, well, Debbie and Tiffany. Do a summary of what's still available.
The website really needs to get updated. It's, it's.
Yes, oh, they were working on that today.
Okay. Uh, good, all right. Select board goals and priorities. Where does that, here somewhere? Or get sent out to us, and this was, uh, a list of activities that, uh, came out of our discussion, our strategic planning discussion of a month or so ago. Um, and we agreed that we would, um, pick amongst ourselves responsibilities for handling one, two, three, four, five, seven different, seven different areas.
I have a, um, question.
Yeah.
Since we have some guests here waiting, would it be possible to switch the items on the agenda so that we can talk pickleball first? They've been very patient.
They have.
I learned a lot.
I learned.
Civic's lesson in action.
Okay. Pickleball follow-up is what it's about.
So.
Okay, and so, yes.
Yeah, so at, at your last meeting, you, um, had reviewed, yeah, last meeting, you had reviewed the, uh, results of the, uh, measuring of the, um, sound because of the new barriers being put in. It's seen a, a pretty good decrease, um, and, and the noise emanating from, from the courts. So with that, you went back to the eight-to-eight prime slot and, and, uh, not locking the courts. And so you wanted to have a quick check-in to see if during the last two weeks, there's been rash of problems uh, with the extended hours and, and not locking. Um, we, we had two police reports filed. Uh, one was a, a noise complaint from just excessive yelling from the courts during the, during the open hours.
You guys got to calm down.
And then there was a, uh, uh, someone still playing after eight o'clock, one, one evening. And, uh, and so both cases, the police came, um, and, uh, the noise situation was called down.
Neither of them involve ball noise?
No, I don't. No, that's correct.
I, uh, I can speak, I know that I probably swing by there on the, on the weekends, uh, three or four times a day. Because I have to move my car. Uh, and, uh, I park right at the, and I can't hear anything. You know, and if, if cars are coming, you don't even notice anyone there. So I, I, I'm, I'm very pleased with, uh, the results. And, uh, I'm happy. I, I don't think they, uh, the pads looked that bad.
Yeah, we went on, uh, one of those longevity benchmarks, uh, Wednesday, and the route Cheryl took us right by the pickleball courts. And I didn't realize we were that close until I, I looked up and there they were. So, I mean, the sound, you couldn't hear anything, and there were people playing. It was really, I think, they had a really great solution.
We did, we did get one email from one of the neighbors to, to say that, from her perspective, that it has significantly reduced the noise.
Yeah, that's great.
She, she appreciated that.
The impact is, the, the quote is, the effect is minimal from our home, and we continue to support pickleball courts. So, um, they seem to feel certainly that the, the noise that was reduced. And we don't get that many emails, pickleball or anything else. Hey, this is great.
So can we say this all down?
So this is, uh, this is.
Can we officially say we're done?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I just, Anne is the one that asked that this be put on the agenda, so I just wanted to know if Anne had any other.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like a slight change in the signage so that I, I know it says that you're not allowed to play after dark, or you're not allowed to use car lights, but could we, now that, um, right, sunset is earlier and earlier, could we make the, um, hours eight till sunset?
It says eight to, oh, sunset. So it says.
Eight, eight.
I mean, but. That's subjective.
Okay, just wanted to be clear that you're not, that people can't drive up and shine their headlights in and, and play until eight when the sun sets at 6:30.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Marion.
Marion, Five Ocean Street, uh, Marion, look, who's, no, Marion, I forget what my name is.
Do you remember what you were gonna say?
Yeah, I guess we remember saying, so they did change the signage, because I was part of changing the signage. And there, the big, there is a big sign now that does say eight to eight. Um, I mean, of course, they could always change it, but, um, one, you, you can't, you can't drive on and, um, shine your lights into, one, you have panels that are, that would be blocking it. It's just physically not possible.
And it's never had.
Yeah, and then that's never been the issue. So, um, and it's only going to be getting darker and darker. So I, I mean.
And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens. I think eight to eight is probably fine. When you say sunset, nobody keeps track of when the sun sets. I just say, I can't see anymore.
Right.
And, uh, eight to, eight to eight, certainly eight is a hard couple.
And then next June, sunset would be at nine o'clock.
Yes, and you're still out of there by eight.
That's right, so.
So.
Oklahoma Dark Falls, right?
No.
No.
No chat.
No. See, thanks.
Mike, I'm taking that to the manufacturer.
Okay.
Blow the dark balls.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was all of you.
Yeah.
How do you.
Sorry.
Girls and fireworks.
Like my dad. It's an attitude you push the dog.
All right, bye.
All right. So, uh, we've got the, uh, we've got the goals and priorities. I don't know if people have favorites here. They, they.
Just talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to stay with MBTA zoning, and there's, there's another topic that didn't get on this list, which is, um, the relationship with the school district. Uh, that's not an immediate, I mean, it's a constant priority, and I have been involved in that. I'd like to stay involved with that.
Okay, all right. So we should add, you're right, we should add that, uh, perpetual topic.
I'm interested in the TA recruitment and either budget and finance or facilities planning.
I'd like to do, I don't do budgeting very well if you saw my, uh, checkbook. Uh, so you can have that. I'd like, uh, facility planning.
So, yep.
Okay.
By the ring here already.
Yes.
That's good. Jeff, do you have any favorites here?
I don't have any favorites, but I'll do, uh, emergency preparedness.
Okay.
And.
I do housing diversity.
Yeah. What else is there?
Uh, there is.
Climate resilience.
Climate resiliency.
Yeah, I'll do that.
My idea of climate resiliency is putting a sweater on.
All right.
Wobba warming, guys, take the sweater off.
Talk to the farmers all about that.
Okay, so I think that was pretty easy. So, um, we've got everything. Did you get that all down, uh, Greg?
Need to facility plan.
Yeah, Brian's facility planning, Kathy's, uh,
Yeah.
Jeff's preparedness, Kathy's gonna be budget and finance, and Jeff's climate resilience.
So in case of emergency, we're going to Jeff's house.
Yep.
My house is an emergency.
Is that the plan?
I suspect we'll all interfere with each other a certain amount as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's great. That, that went pretty quickly. Uh, liaison updates. Brian, you got anything?
You heard it. I spoke with, uh, Cheryl earlier, and the only thing was the, uh, uh, the only thing that seemed to be percolating, and now this, this is over, although I, I'm sure we'll continue to hear things about it. But, uh, Ox and Rec is, uh, getting ready for, uh, basketball now.
Yeah.
School, school, transition from playground to school after school. I believe that Cheryl is looking to hire someone else uh, to help with the after-school program. And then, uh, yeah, so I think, you know, Ox and Rec, the 12-month, uh,
Yeah, it is.
Endeavor.
She's getting into a difficult time where she's gonna start to lose people, a lot of people.
Well, I think every small business in town is looking at, that relies on kids, is looking to lose a lot of kids.
All right. Well, good. Uh, Anne, you have any comments on your liaising, uh, 100 miles to the sea or wherever?
Um, no.
Okay. All right. Jeff?
Um, on the planning board side of things, the last meeting, there was a, um, meeting with the blasting company for cell signaling and residents. And, uh, there was a lot of concerns there that took up a good portion of the meeting. Um, there was a little bit of a lack of communication between the blasting company and the residents, but it looks like that's getting resolved. And they're gonna send out text alerts to people that want them, and, uh, well, not pre-blast inspections now, but blast inspections of homes for people that want those. Uh, there was a lot of talk about at-water rav and, uh, slowing down traffic there, uh, and sidewalks first, no sidewalks. Um, then after that, there was talk about conditions for those special permit to expand the, uh, repack floats. But that didn't seem, I thought we were gonna have a special permit, but they didn't get too far with that. And this, this meeting ran late. It was at 10 o'clock by the time. So I think.
The blasting took most of the time?
I think, yeah. So I think they were pretty much out of steam by the time we got to that point. Uh, so maybe that should be something early on in the next agenda. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Um, on the Harvard advisory side, there was some good, uh, conversation in regards to implementing, uh, permitting for functions on the water and, uh, criteria for that. So that's in the works. And that's about it.
Okay. Good. I, I knew the planning board was busy.
They got their hands full, that's for sure, yeah.
All right. Kathy?
Um, yeah, nothing to bike and ped meetings tomorrow, so I got nothing there. Downtown, if you want, does need for a while, so.
Okay. And for me, uh, the seniors were on the agenda tonight. There continues to be their hot topic, uh, interpretation, and, um, I don't have anything on the D D W. They're starting their work on Pleasant Street, which is in my neighborhood, so I have a daily update on that, fact, an hourly.
Question on, uh, D B W stuff, um, somebody asked me if there was any, uh, plans to replace the water main further north on School Street. Like, are they gonna be doing more work north of where they already did, the work they already completed on School Street towards 128, like, um?
To Mill Street.
Okay, so further up towards one twenty eight, yeah, so is that, do we know the timeframe around that or?
Um, so it's part of the CST improvements, um, so. Late, late fall.
Okay, so it's not imminent, but like late, like another couple of months or so?
Yeah.
Late fall is here.
Yeah. Shh, it's still summer.
Old this morning.
Nothing to be told on Fraddish. So maybe late fall, they would start that soon.
Is is that School Street or Mill Street?
I'm sorry, Anne, what was that?
Um, I thought that was crossing one twenty eight and going Mill Street and Forest Street.
That's what I thought. I thought Forest was involved, not Mill.
Not, well, and and not school.
Right.
They they're completing, they'll make a complete loop.
Oh.
So yes, they're coming up Forest and Mill, but they will go from. Uh, where it crosses one twenty eight to to CST, they'll keep coming up Mill to school and then back down school to connect.
So they've got a loop, which is uh, they've got plan B if there's a problem.
Well, it'll improve service significantly to.
Well, I think the water service will be uh, the pressure will be.
Where is it gonna cross the highway?
There's a, there's an, there's already an underground. What's the word, conduit.
At Mill Street, right?
Oh, it's uh, it's closer to Forest.
It's um. It's towards Forest.
Yeah.
But but it's it's um, right before the the sharp bend.
On Mill Street, like when you come down hill and then you turn right there, you're about to look before a little bridge.
Yes, exactly. So uh, yeah, there's an existing sleeve under under one twenty eight.
And it's big enough to put.
Both water and sewer.
Oh, that's a pretty big sleeve.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's good.
Yes. Yeah, there's that, there's at least two sleeves, there may be three.
So there'll be no additional work to.
There's no digging.
Okay, other questions or comments from liaison?
Um, just out of curiosity, um, does the work on the um water main and sewer mains crossing one twenty eight have? Any dependency on the permit that the park that the planning board is working on?
No, there's not. That's separate.
Good. You're up, Greg.
Uh, you want to decide the agenda or?
Yeah.
So we have minutes from eight eight five and then um. Uh, then Teresa Malvin is is looking for your food book, she's on live here, um, to approve a food truck for the November election. Looking to do the same location you did in the spring, or that we had approved for the spring.
Okay, any questions on the consent agenda? And I will make, no, Brian.
Yeah, well, jeez.
I'm sorry. Regret me now.
You did, you did, not me. I moved the select board approved the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John says yes. Okay.
Theresa, congratulations.
Theresa, you're all set.
Thank you very, very much.
Yep. Okay, uh. Greg, your report.
Uh, yeah, so a few things here, a couple additional ones I wanted to update you on as well. Um, first, for for town clerk. Um, situation, uh, so today was Diane's, Diane Booko's last day with us, we wish her well as she moves on, she'll be becoming the town clerk in Wyndham. Uh, where actually she came from, so she's going back to the home turf. Uh, we do have an interim. Retired town clerk able to help us out for the next three weeks here. Her name is Pat Brown, she comes, she's most recently was retired from Rockford. So so I would like a motion from the board to approve appointing uh Pat Brown as our interim town clerk.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on Pat? Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
John is yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's start when?
Uh, just like tomorrow. So, uh, luckily that all came together today. I was, I was uh getting nervous, but was pleased that she could help us out. And um, so at your next meeting, I will present to you um the recommendation for our new town clerk. We have someone who has agreed to come on board. Uh, I'll have that all for you at your next meeting. So. I'm gonna mistake, we're able to move forward pretty smoothly.
Was it, was that a tough search, or I mean, those people are out there?
Um, we were not flooded with applicant applicants, but we had two very strong applicants. In addition to some others, but we had two very good ones, so I was pleased with that. So that's that's where we are with that. Uh, Elaine Persson's has been, she started last week helping out. So she's she'll be a full-time presence in in the office, um, and Pat will be a few hours, a few times a week. Keep everything going, and of course, we have the election on the third, the primary election is the third, and Pat will be in charge of that. We have a very good crew of election workers, so anticipating a smooth, a smooth day there as well. Yeah, Jeff updated you on on the blasting, uh, conversations that took place. Uh, Chief McNeely continues to do um. A lot of good outreach to the residents when they have questions, that's been very helpful. A couple of other things that are not on my written note here, but um, John, you mentioned the operational audits. We have uh. We have three different consulting firms that I'm talking to, um, hope to um. Again, at your next meeting, present a final recommendation for you on that. So that should get underway in September. We'll get rolling on that. Um, in the water department, so there was, everyone received the water meter replacement notice, gotten that in the mail over the weekend. No.
So, this is the question I asked when Chuck proposed this, but those of us who do not get paper bills.
Right.
How are we informed? I got nothing. I got my email from the system saying I owe. You know, money.
Yeah, so that's coming from your association, is it?
No, no. Oh, no. Let's see, I get an email from the the system we use, what's its, uh, City Hall system?
City Hall system, yes, yes.
So.
Let me follow up.
We we need to. Figure that out.
Yep.
How many people are like you? I mean.
I don't know, so I get an e-pay request from. You know, the City Hall systems. I don't see any attachments with the letter, but this is what I was concerned about.
Yes.
Interesting, yeah.
Does that, that would mean certain bills?
Yes.
The uh, my landlord, he subdivided the units, we each have to pay about. We get our quarterly bill, but he sends us the quarterly bill, which I think is illegal. No, we're separately meted.
Oh, you're separately.
He's going, what he does is he separately meters, that's the only way he can charge. Water, he can, he can if it's separately meted.
Yes.
Okay, but by law, what he doesn't do is I'm supposed to see the bill, not just the statement. I'm not gonna piss and moan too much about it. But so that I didn't get one either. But then. That is, it was a shock, Jeff, when it happened.
Yeah, I didn't think of residentially, yeah.
As long as it's separately muted.
Yeah, this does not, there's nothing here on the system.
Okay, we'll follow up on that.
And nobody forwarded my mail to me.
Mailbox didn't visit you?
Passed me right by.
So in the next couple of weeks, there'll be another um flyer going out on a different topic, uh, which is in regards to. Um, inventory of the pipe from the curb stop, where the town stops, that's where our responsibility ends, and then the the line feeding the individual property. Individual home lines. Um, so EPA is uh mandating that we do. It's completed inventory of what those pipes are. Composition, what are they made out of? This is all about lead.
Yeah, lead pipes.
It's all about lead pipes.
So if they cast iron sewer coming out, are they gonna try and make you replace that?
So.
What's the idea behind that?
So identifying the the lead pipes, they, and so they are giving um funds to help homeowners replace those ones. Or to do, or to do some mitigation, I'm not, I'll give more details on Chuck, what the mitigation levels are. But I know that we've received dollars from the. I think it's from EPA, um, to help with removing and replacing lead ones.
But it would be a separate contractor digging from sidewalk in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a specific um age of building range where that might be more likely to be the case as opposed to, you know, something built after like nineteen, before nineteen eighty or, you know, something?
Correct, yeah, and 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 the flyer will explain some of that, I believe. And so anyways, there'll be another, another flyer going out, asking people to fill out a short survey.
Well, that I might get if they just send it to every resident, but if it's. You know, I already got one water bill, but it was electronic, so I didn't get that flyer. This is gonna be different.
This doesn't involve billing. Anything billing, I guess you're in trouble.
I mean.
You don't get the uh.
So if I don't. So this this will be a separate, this isn't going with the bill.
Right, but it's not gonna be explaining what we missed the last time.
If you throw it out, you opt out.
Yeah.
That you understand.
I understand not to, I understand throwing out.
Could, could they put a second copy if they're if they're doing a mailing to everybody in town? Could they put both notices in it?
Yeah, that's.
That's an idea.
An easy solve.
Yeah, let me see, I think, I think the other one was a postcard.
Oh, okay.
I think that was their goal, but let me, let me follow up on that.
That makes sense.
So. So if it's a postcard, then yeah, chance to direction, but maybe we can. Provide a a small note about a link to this, this one on that postcard or something.
You're you're gonna ask people to pay for something in need, they, everybody needs to receive that letter, so.
Yeah, need work on that. So that's gonna be coming out in the next couple of weeks, February as well. So you can keep your eyes out for that. And then lastly, I had on my list here, just to talk a little bit about scheduling, so September meetings. Um, so your next meeting will fall on Labor Day, September second. Um, and then Tuesday, the third is Election Day. It's not uh. It's not prohibited from moving on Election Day, it's just, it's frowned upon to to compete with Election Day. So we were looking at probably meeting on the fourth. Uh, which is Wednesday.
Okay, the harbor committee is meeting then, but that probably doesn't make any difference.
Uh, I I can do the fourth, I go, I definitely don't wanna push it to the next week, I'm gonna be out.
Yeah.
Vacation from the seventh through the coming back on the eleventh, so. I can do the Wednesday, I can. Either Wednesday or Thursday.
So that's, yes, yes, I can do one.
I have, I have no problem with four.
I'm I'm, I can make the fourth work for me.
I could make the third work, I can probably arrange to get to the polls before six thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, you you can do the third if you want.
I'm fine keeping it the third.
Yeah. Uh, I'm okay with the third, yeah.
The third was, you know, November fourth, the big presidential election, I would frown upon that, this is a state primary and we have early voting, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I I I'm.
Early voting is starting uh the Saturday, in fact.
Yeah, so I, maybe we could keep this.
I I'll keep it on the third.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So then your next scheduled meeting would be the sixteenth.
Like if you're not here.
Um, I will be away that that week.
The dump's running it?
No, but we can make it the following.
You can.
The following week, because it's a five Monday month. So we're skipping the next week anyway.
Well, he still won't be back.
He's back for the twenty third, the twenty fourth, or whatever.
I do.
I'm back for the twenty second, yeah, so I could do the twenty fourth. I I was avoiding Monday, because that'll be the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do the twenty fourths.
I'm okay with that. I mean, I mean, the meeting after that in October is two weeks later. So this is.
Right.
We got a two week gap somewhere.
You gotta have a two week gap somewhere.
And so we're making it before that rather than after that.
Okay.
Little, I won't be as much help with preparation for.
Okay.
So when is, um, so our next meeting though is then the third. So why don't we see what the agenda needs to be for the meeting on your immediate return?
If you if you have a good sense of it, I can put a lot of that together before.
Yeah.
Well, that's still a ways out.
Yeah.
It's more than a month out, so. Just make a note, we need to think about that.
Yeah, just, you know, if uh, all of you, to Anne and Debbie, perhaps lean on all of you a little more to get the materials together for that meeting.
We got a heavy prep meeting. Okay. So the third and the twenty fourth, that's what's coming up. Other things?
Good.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, I was just gonna ask what was going on with changing the status of the harbor master.
Changing staff.
Classification?
Classification. That's from like two months ago.
Oh.
Is that on our action list?
I think it is. So so I don't, I don't have anything new to report on that.
Okay.
But you will.
I think, I think we had it scheduled in the.
Uh, I thought you'd mentioned it in your, in your letter, but. I imagine it.
That's on the schedule for the third. It's it's on the schedule for the third, so it's there, Anne.
It's not, I'll trump the gun here.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, what?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, I think even Jim voted yes.
I think that's in there.
Thank you very much for putting up with me.
You, you especially, Anne. When's your ETA?
Uh, uh, well. Uh, I think I'll be back on the twenty fifth or twenty sixth of August. I'm coming back early because the Portuguese Water Dog Rescue Association has found a dog that they think would be good for me. So I'm really happy. I will come back for you guys, I will come back for a dog.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Bye.
Yeah, bye bye.